Let's get started. Tonight's meeting is not a town board meeting per se. It is a public information meeting. We're here to hear comments and answer questions regarding Green Track's proposal to build casino at Stewart Airport. To the press, I just want to make a couple of comments here. To the press, hold your questions until after the meeting. This is for general public. After the meeting, we will go back to my office and gladly answer or do anything any of the press wanted to want. And I want to remind everybody that there'll be another meeting on Thursday, the 29th, this coming Thursday, for us to make a declaration on the action. That's going to be at 7:00 PM right here. Okay? I think Bob, with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to you for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good to be back in New Windsor. Thank you for inviting us back in. My name is Robert J. McLaughlin. I am an attorney at a law firm called Hotch and Russ. And I spend my time from Albany and New York City and for the last several months in New Windsor. So we need to talk about the casino project and specifically tonight to expand on what we talked about at our public meeting two or three weeks ago and talk about our environmental review that we've done. With me here again is Andrew Riley. He's a senior at Wendell Engineering out of Buffalo. He is the -- they are the project engineer. He has been responsible for conducting the environmental review that's been done on the site. That was submitted to the town and it's -- we're here to talk to you about what we've done and what the -- and also, more importantly, to listen to what your questions are, what your concerns are regarding not only the environmental review but regarding the aspect, any aspect of the project. Okay? So I did want to point out again, this is our proposed casino. This is International Boulevard, Bruning Road. There will be a parking garage, the casino, a hotel, restaurants, bars, entertainment facilities, pool on the backside of the casino, and an event center. Parking will be ground outside. There is property across the street that's potential retail. May initially be parking as well and then the customary ugly parking garage that needs to be in every casino. Our property that we're proposing to lease from the town, just put this up quickly, includes approximately 140 acres. So again, Bruning Road, International Boulevard at the corner, straight back with a little bit of a jag, and it actually includes most of the hill as well, loops around the hill. Our plan initially right now is to maintain this bottom 40 acres or so approximately as a buffer space so that there'll be no development on this back part of the land. Everything will be toward the front where the airport is. Okay? And with that, turn it over to Andrew Riley.
Thank you. And thank you for having us here tonight and thank you for joining us tonight. Bob, so my name is Drew Riley. I work for a company called Wendell. Been doing this for, I think, 30 years now, environmental reviews for different communities all over New York State. One of the background though tonight, I'm just going to do about 15-minute presentation because tonight's about getting input from everybody that's here, getting questions answered. Background, when we looked at, we were looking at many different sites throughout the area. This site rose to the top because of its history and because of the fact that there's been environmental work done on this site. So that's an important thing to note. And I think all you know the history of this site. I got a little history here. There was 5,600 Army personnel at one point located in this area with 114 buildings on this site many years ago. In 1999, the town acquired this property through an act of Congress for economic development purposes. And then in 2002, 2003, which really got our attention, there was an environmental impact statement done for the development of the site into 2.5 billion square feet of retail, office, R&amp;D, conference centers, hotels, have I said? So it was a big plan for 2.5 billion square feet of development throughout all this 200-plus acres of land. So that was one of the important points, we chose this property. So it gave us a lot of background information and to build from that. We didn't just sit on that 10-year-old data. We also build upon that 10-year-old data. Now, how do you do environmental reviews and start a board? Under the State Environmental Party Review Act, there's a section, Part II, that says you look at all these potential impacts. And there's impact to land, water, all these things, and there's a whole list of them. You're supposed to identify those things that may have a potential impact and do further review of those things. We took a very conservative approach. I think there was only one thing we didn't look at. We didn't look at impact to agricultural resources. So we just figured there wasn't a lot of farming occurring in this piece of property, so we didn't look at that. But every other component of the secret process, we looked at that. We didn't ignore anything. We wanted to get all that information to the town. They had a lot, but we wanted to update that information. So impact to land. As Bob mentioned, leasing 140 acres of land, including this piece, and we're sorry it didn't show up on here, those who live down here were also leasing this. But we're only developing about 60 acres of that site. As Bob mentioned, a lot of it's going to be green space, so a lot less impacted actual land. There are no unique geological features. I know people who live in this area, the hill here, but there's no unique geological features as defined by the state. Also important thing when you look at impact to land is the length of time. Under the State Act, this has to be done in two years. So it's not going to drag out for five, six, seven years of construction or longer when you're constructing long-term projects. It's got to be done in two years. Impact on surface water. The actual impervious surface, parking area and buildings, are only 18 acres. It's nice when you build up and not out all the time. That's what leaves all that green space. We're going to have a very modern drainage system. 2002, they proposed a nice drainage system, but we're actually going into a more modern drainage system. We're going to have green roofs on the building, underground park, underground storage of the detention, so there will be surface ponds out here. And we're using other sustainability practices in this. We're going to have a great erosion incentive control plan that we're not going to impact while we're constructing. And we looked at the state point out, there are some minor wetlands on this property, federal wetlands. We updated that study. They are off of our site and we're not impacting them at all. We're not going to ask for any permits. We're leaving those wetlands, those small little wetland areas untouched. There's also a protected stream south of the site. We'll have no impacts to that protected stream. Impact, I'm just going through what's in that Part II of the A F, that's the order of it. Impact on the sewer system, this has to do with water. We're generating less wastewater than was proposed for this area in the past. There was hotels and other things proposed. We're generating less wastewater. There are sewer lines in this area that we're going to have to replace and take out. And when we replace those sewer lines, they're going to take away the I and I problems, the inflow and infiltration. A lot of problems with sewers is not the sewers in it, it's the water when it rains getting into the system. So we're going to fix all those lines so you have less I and I. The wastewater treatment plant does have capacity, but we know, and having done over 10 of these facilities, we know that the waste stream, although the flow is 180,000 gallons a day, the waste stream is, how can I put this gently at the last meeting, it's much more, it's stronger, we'll put it that way, okay? So we're going to help the town make improvements. If people ask why we're going to make improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, because that'll benefit the whole town. So we'll do those improvements at the wastewater treatment plant to benefit the entire town. The flow is not a problem, but it's a little stronger waste that we're adding. When I say stronger waste, it's just human waste. We're not generating any hazardous materials.
Highly concentrated.
Highly concentrated. I guess people don't, they play all day long and they use the bathroom, that's it. Impact on the water system. I know this is at the first meeting. A lot of people came up and talked to me afterwards. We're going to require less water than was proposed before in the past. The water lines are capable of supplying the flows and the pressures needed to this site under normal conditions. Plenty of flow, plenty of pressure for 180,000 gallons a day we're going to utilize. The town has been working, that's the great thing, the town's been working on improving their water system with new well fields and other improvements to their system. And they can talk more about that, but you guys have been working on that for years. So with those improvements, there should be plenty of capacity here at all times of the year. We're also, we know that there's times when a lot of this water comes from the New York City aqueduct that runs by here. And there's certain times over the years where the general that they cut that supply off or they charge extra money for that, for purchasing that water, we will end up buying at a higher rate. So we won't put that higher rate. For some reason, there's an exceedance of the water that you can purchase there, we're going to buy the higher rate water, not have the citizens buy it. There is an aquifer in the area. It's off this site over here. We're going to have no impact because we're not developing on the other side of the hill. Impact to air. We're going to generate a lot less traffic. One of the big impacts to air is traffic. We're generating a lot less traffic than what was proposed under the original plan. We're also going to have very modern HVAC equipment, meaning all modern standards. We're going to be LEED. You're going to see we have a basis of design that we share with the town. It's a very modern HVAC system. Impact to plants and animals. Great thing, previously disturbed site. The D E C identified some potential, there's a sandpiper out there, but there's not a habitat for that. And in 2002, you acknowledged the fact also, there wasn't that habitat for that. There's also the Indiana bat's been brought up, and we don't have the trees and stuff that they usually roost in a certain time of year. If we have any of those trees, which we're not removing many of the trees on the site, there's a time period that you can remove them in, and the D E C has pointed that out to us. There's also, it was noted on some state websites, a bog turtle and a wedge mussel, which we don't have bog turtles or wedge mussels out here. We're preserving a large area of the site, which I think is another big benefit to plants and animals. A lot of this green area is going to remain. Impact on aesthetics. High-quality design, Bob showed you design. It's facing out to Bruning and International. But we also did, because of this new component, which is a hotel here, we tried to tuck it against the hill so it would obscure the views of it. We did what we call line of sight analysis in all the directions. And you really will be unable to see this hotel in this direction, this direction towards the school down here, this direction. You will be able to see it, but it's about three, four miles away is when you'll be able to see it, and it'll look like a dot on the horizon. So we kind of shielded it against this hill, and as you know, the vegetation in the area also helps with screening the views of this. Impact on historic and archaeological. There are no archaeologically sensitive sites in this area that was previously determined in the old study. And the old study also identified the Sarah McGregor House, hopefully I'm saying that correctly. But we're not impacting the Sarah McGregor House at all. There was some discussion about how that would be safe. We're not impacting that at all. I don't believe it's even on our 140-acre property. Impact on transportation, big one. And we could spend a long time talking about, again, I think, saying that we're generating less traffic than what was proposed in 2002, 2003. Since 2002, 2003, a lot of improvements, International Boulevard being one, and other improvements have made to this area. Those improvements were made with the idea of this New York International Plaza project generating a lot of traffic. We're going to generate less traffic. But we didn't just sit on our laurels and saying we're doing less traffic. We also analyzed some of the traffic up there. We did an updated traffic study, and by the way, we took conservative view of everything. If there were 10 different studies that said this is what's going to generate traffic, we took the worst case. Traffic law says you can, or traffic studies say you can take the average. We took the worst-case scenario. We did not want anybody to say we cut any corners. We took the worst-case scenario of traffic generation, and we're still not going to have problems out there. Eighty-five percent of traffic will be International Boulevard. But again, to be as conservative as possible, there will be some impacts to 207 and 300. We've agreed with the town. We've identified four intersections that will be improvements will be made to them. So we didn't ignore that either. And the last thing, the town very, I think, made a great point is that many of these type of facilities, we'll do a follow-up traffic analysis when this is built. We will do a follow-up traffic analysis six months later and analyze that. In my 25 years of doing those, because of the conservative nature of traffic, traffic is always less than was predicted in those studies. But we will do a follow-up traffic study and agree if it is above and other improvements have to be made, we would participate in those improvements. We knew traffic was a big issue. We were very conservative on our approach to traffic. Impacts on energy. There's adequate capacity in the area. We've talked to the facilities in the area. We're also required by the State's Act to do 10% renewables. So we're going to have renewables there, and we have a very energy-efficient building. Noise and light, this one I want to get to because people are concerned about that. Noise and light. The HVAC equipment and the generators are the two outdoor uses that will generate noise. There are going to be enclosures, and they're going to have noise-reducing equipment. And we were so conservative on that, even at the nearest receptor, when we talk about receptors are, your houses or other things that are surrounding, will be well below 40 decibels. People ask me what 40 decibels is?
It's a whisper. It's below, about 35 decibels is what would be in a living room or a dining room, a very low, it's a very low level. So we did that analysis. On the lighting, we did dark sky compliant on any of the lights in the parking facilities. And if you notice from the first drawing, the lighting, we're going to try to light out towards International and Bruning and keep all the lights from the backside of the building as much as possible. So again, they'll be well lit. Casinos are well lit, but the type of lighting systems are going to be, when they're all dark, they won't glow. So we won't have that big glow that people worry about in areas that are more rural. We're also by far meeting all the town's standards, and we want to make sure we're meeting those standards also. And I'm almost done. Impact on public health. This site was previously, as we said, disturbed. There was a lot of environmental work done and making sure that the town, when they took ownership of the property, didn't take environmentally contaminated site that we would disturb when we build here. We are also, there'll be some structures that still have to be torn down. Those buildings most probably, I think you've done the studies, have asbestos in them. They may have some lead paint in them. We'll follow all the procedures for removing asbestos and lead paint before taking any structures down. Growth and character of the community, always a very difficult one to analyze. But the biggest thing is we're in accordance with the original plan. The original plan, New York International Plaza, had retail conference centers, hotels, restaurants, all those things in it. We're in accordance with that plan. The town's comprehensive plan talks about this being for intensive development and for destinations, which we believe we are here. Then if you even go to the county, the Orange County Plan calls this a priority growth area. Matter of fact, Stewart Airport is targeted for growth in this area, so we're in accordance with that. And then there's your strategic plan, which is your regional economic development plans that have been done all over New York State. And they actually even talk about casinos and stuff in that regional economic development plan. So we believe this project is in accordance with the local planning and the regional planning that's been done. The one thing that has happened, since the New York International Plaza project, this was airport zoning, allowed retail and all those things we talked about. The present AP district has not allowed retail. So if we are going to put retail over here, the town is talking about amending their zoning and go back to what it was before to allow retail in this area. All our other uses are in performance with the zoning, obviously, except for the casino. Casinos covered by the state's law. There's no one in New York State that allows casinos by right in their zoning ordinances. So the town is going to be creating new zoning ordinances. Impact on community services. We have been working with the emergency service, police, fire, ambulance, CMT. We're working with those, and Green Track is also going to provide improvements and help them make sure that they can service this facility. Our understanding is with those improvements, they will be able to service this facility. So I am done because tonight is about you and turning it back to the supervisor.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to a couple of comment questions. We have a stenographer up here tonight, so when you get up to speak, we'll give us your name and address if you don't mind. But definitely your name so we can properly address questions. For that, anybody? Oh, women. Rich.
Good evening. I want to thank the town board for this opportunity for the town residents to speak at the pending Green Track Casino Development. I am in favor of the casino for the value it adds for our tax rolls and potential jobs. Jimmy's done a good job presenting the advantages and plans of this casino to them. If you say that the Green Track Casino is approved, it's going to take care of existing problems that have not been drastically corrected in the past. One sewage is to be treated, I believe, should be treated at casino site by tertiary sewage treatment facility licensed to and maintained by Green Track. The casino property should be its own designated sewer district. District must be directed toward movement creek watershed. This plan will ensure all other properties and residents of New Windsor will not be negatively affected by Green Track project. As far as water is concerned, water should be supplied from these premises. As noted, there is an aquifer nearby. And they must guarantee that the water meets the bargain health standards. This must be a Green Track expense. Given the water available to New Windsor from New York City Aqueduct, water demand created by Green Track users will drive increase in water rates for New Windsor household based on the New York City pricing requirement. I suggest you conduct a statistically accurate and protectable poll of New Windsor town people to calculate the acceptance or desire of a casino at Stewart. We can do this by contracting with a college such as Mary's, which might be at, let do these kinds of surveys. Your public hearing announcement does not communicate with residents. A sole decision by the board during the week reflects bias and not the truth sent to the people of New Windsor. I say that the people decide. While I do expect the results to be overwhelmingly positive at the end of the survey, they all would ensure the will of the people and make it clear. The outcome of the survey will favorably impress the decision-makers in Albany for this confirmation of the will and support of the people in the project. Both these issues are recognized problems in the town of New Windsor that have not been properly addressed by the board. Drive, ban, seizure of land, from 1949, betting, and it knows that something's wrong with the sewer plant. As a result of the town's approval, there are five high-density housing projects, three of which are completed, one is underway, and one is yet to break down, have to break ground. All of this has been done without any upgrade or expansion due to aiding the town of New Windsor sewage treatment facility. While recent development has fulfilled the needs for senior workforce, assisted living housing, our town board has ignored the recently approved coverage plan and neglected to make provisions for the increased demands on water supply and sewage treatment facilities. Expecting Green Track will cure the illness at the sewage treatment plant is naive, as Green Track is not guaranteed to win a license. Based upon existing sewage prices we face, I'd also recommend a bond. We instituted procedures for our controller to appeal to lending institutions underwriting in the salon. The bond will provide financial resources to renovate and upgrade New Windsor sewer plant to D E C specs. Should Green Track secure New Windsor gaming license for the town in New Windsor location, there will be newly generated tax revenue. Restrict these dollars to pay up the bond holders for the renovated scissors and sewage treatment facility until the bonds are paid. To somewhat point the view of the town of New Windsor and its people, don't rely on unsure outside organizations to fix our longstanding water and sewage problems. We must fix them ourselves. The well of our own privacy, the well-being of our town, our school, business in order to be proper planning, not a mean, mean facility. We should determine our own fate. The risks and multiples of fear must not be the sole determining factor of our success. You can bet on that. The town board plan ahead. Make sure you're acting in behalf of the will of the people, conduct a survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Zegon. I live in Cardinal, New York. Can I ask two questions? Because I had one prepared for, before I heard the speech, and I have one for the audience. One, if the casino is approved and the project goes through, will it continue, other than the jobs that are created in the construction? Will it continue to benefit the county as a whole economically afterwards? For example, will there be any type of commitment to purchase goods and services from local businesses, businesses in the county?
So, great question. The statute that was passed by the legislature last year requires certain funds to come back to New Windsor as a host community. So that's estimated to be at least $6 million. In addition here, you'll have real estate taxes and lease payments on top of that. But it's also required to have commitments in the region and specifically in Orange County. So we have already committed and will continue to commit that our priority will be to use local businesses, goods and services, merchandise here because that drives the economic development benefit. The whole goal of the legislature is to create an economic engine for the region, not just for the casino. Casino will make money, okay? Every casino always makes money wherever it goes, okay? But it does us no good, it defeats the purpose of the legislation, if it's just all at Stewart Airport. We need to go out and make sure that not only are we sending our patrons out to the communities through cross-promotion, but also buying goods and services that are out there that can be produced and provided to us from the community.
Is that in writing, in terms of commitment? Like, is it just, you know?
It is a provision.
No assurance that it's going to happen as opposed to something in writing that you can be bound to?
My word is my bound. We're required to do a host agreement, and part of that host agreement is provision, there will be a provision in there that has that commitment in there.
That's been addressed in the draft, and it will be in the final.
All right, thank you.
Was it a question?
Yes. With regard to the environmental study that was done, there'd be a lot of promises in terms of how conservative an approach you're taking. Is there any way that if anyone wanted to, not that we don't trust you, but to actually follow up and check on past projects perhaps that you've done on environmental impact studies that have been done in the past? Whether or not your projections did in fact turn out to be conservative in nature? Are there people that we could contact for?
Yeah, and I can give those to the town. But the town has also done a great job, is they went out and hired independent people, independent traffic consultants, independent people who review everything that we've done. So they haven't just counted on our word. They basically, we worked hand-in-hand. They gave us input. We responded to that, and we went back and forth. It wasn't like we're just handed them and said, this is what's going to happen. They had the professionals review it, come back to us and say, no, we'd like you to do this, and they'd like you to do this. So it was a back and forth. It wasn't just us handing them something and saying, you've got to believe this. But by all means, we'll get you where we've done other casino projects.
You have to understand that, as Drew mentioned, the traffic study was done by our consultant, not by Green Tracks. But of course, Green Track paid for it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't understand. Thank you.
And that will be, in fact, it is in the draft, so.
Right.
For the, for the.
And the one item I forgot to mention in my opening remarks is that it is called the Grand Hudson Hotel and Casino. Grand Hudson. The Grand Hudson.
Hotel and casino. If you know what I mean.
In the back?
My name is Mike Coleman. I live on Walnut Street. And I have a question. Jobs in your talk about growth here.
Excuse me. Hold on, hold on.
I can't hear a word, friend.
Mike Coleman, Walnut Street.
Can you come up?
Friend's going to be able to hear you too.
My question is jobs for what? Okay, Mike Coleman, Walnut Street.
Mike Coleman?
Yeah, Coleman, Walnut Street. The permanent jobs you've decided to create in the area here, are they going to be above minimum wage? How many jobs are you looking to create here?
So, as we said in the public meeting three weeks ago? Three weeks ago? Mr. Wynn is committed to more than, you know, higher than minimum wage. So good-paying jobs. I think he said the average person in Green Track now in Alabama is over 40,000. I think it's 42,000 with full benefits. So his vision is to bring that here. We estimate, you know, approximately 2,500 full-time employees. The reality is because of attrition, hard time, not everyone is full-time. We'll probably train up to twice that much, potentially, just so that we have staff available. But you figure at any given time, there'll be 2,500 employees at the site.
These are more mostly minimum wage management we're talking about?
More, no, no, no. There'll be a fair number of management jobs and supervisor jobs, but there'll also be a, every job will be above minimum wage.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I saw another. Yeah, ma'am?
Okay, I have second questions.
Would you please stand? Can you hear it?
I'm with the press. Can I?
If you're with the press, no.
Thank you.
You will be in my office afterwards. We'll answer all your questions.
I can ask him questions.
I'll be there.
They'll be in my office.
I'll be there.
We'll all be available.
I'll be available afterward.
Okay.
Anyone else?
This is for the public.
Anyone?
why I've always lived here is because of New Windsor's commitment to family, the values that New Windsor has always had. My concern is, I think it's great that new jobs are going to be brought to this area. I think it's great that possibly more people will be employed, but I'm just wondering whether any of you have considered the impact that it's going to have on our society? What message bringing a casino here to New Windsor is going to have on our youth? And I understand the value of the almighty dollar, but I also think there are other factors that need to be considered, and I'm wondering if any of you on the board have considered that? That being said, I live in a community called The Grove, which is what says over there in the existing condos, and I'm concerned about what impact this casino is going to have on my quality of life, and about the children in that community. And I'm wondering if any of that was taken into consideration when GreenTrack was asked to present this proposal?
Okay, that's probably a question for me and the board to address. Yes, we did look at the impact, looked at the fact that our youth coming up will have opportunities for employment, you know, that there, at the end, I'm going to read a statement regarding employment in Orange County as compared to Sullivan County, it's going to shock a lot of you, I think. But yes, we did look, we did look at The Grove. The Grove is rather isolated from the casino location itself. I don't think any of the actual development goes up, up to, what is that?
Old Cherry Road.
What's the, on the other side?
Long Cherry Road.
Yeah, on the other side. None of that development goes up that far, I don't believe. You know, you're on the other side of The Grove. Wait, 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 I listen to you, now you listen to me.
Okay.
All right?
Please finish.
We did consider that, and, you know, Stewart is an obvious location because of the isolation of, of, from the general, from most of the general community. Yes. Are you close to the casino? Yes. But when we looked at it, we didn't see that that was such an impact that it would be detrimental to your community. Bob?
Sure. Did you have another question or comment?
Joe, I was just, I disagree in pointing it out, that the area wasn't close to where this residential complex is based. I see a lot of yellow areas, dotted areas on that map, and that looks pretty close to the existing condo unit.
Well, what this map doesn't show is the hill, or knoll, I think it's called technically a knoll, right?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, knoll.
Not really a hill, it's a knoll. You'll have to tell me what the distinction is. But in our development, we were very concerned with the proximity, in developing the site, with the proximity of the residential homes, okay? So we made sure that our tower for the hotel was below the highest point of that hill. So, there are other facilities, gaming facilities that are being proposed with five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred rooms, okay? Both in Orange and in Sullivan County. We're at three hundred and fifty, specifically because we didn't want to go above that knoll, because we didn't want you to not only not see, but we don't want you to hear, and as Drew said, forty decimals is very low. We didn't want you to see or hear any part of the casino, and the lighting will take care of that as well. So we do have your concern. If during the development we need to chat with the homeowners there, we'll be happy to do that. Your other aspect was social. The legislature has proposed a very aggressive social program in the statute that we have to comply with regarding not only problem gaming, but also substance abuse. So we've developed those rules, and that'll be part of our application. We're actually going more or further than what the statute requires. We're doing outreach with the Orange County, Dutchess County, Ulster County, and Button County commissioners of mental health, to be able to partner with them and with their not-for-profits in the area to develop strong programs to address the needs of substance abuse, which will be part of this facility and problem gaming. We'll also have a very strong self-exclusion policy that's permitted under the statute, and we'll have those not-for-profits train our employees to recognize problem gaming and substance abuse. Finally, at the doors of every entrance, okay, for children in the community, they will not be allowed in the casino facility at all, because we'll have security places at every entrance to, and, well, not only at the entrance, but also at the gaming floor to make sure that those that are underage cannot get in. So, I hope I've addressed your question.
Let me just add a little bit more, because it is a misconception of this drawing. When we say we kept it away, we slid all the development as far to this corner as possible. All this is green space area that was going, this was going to be developed in the task plan, work that was done, we're not developing this area, we're not developing this area, we're not developing this area, or this area the town even added in, which was, this was future also development here. So, we've pushed the casino and the operation as far away from this residential as possible.
Now, let me, let me add, Kevin. When we looked at this whole plan and considered the original plan of two and a half million square feet of space, which included trucking terminals, manufacturing, retail, I can't think of all the things that were included in it, this is going to be a whole lot less innocuous than what was originally proposed. You're going to have, you know, you're not going to have as much traffic, truck traffic. You know, if that, if that was developed out of two and a half million square feet, that's a lot of development.
Not proposed, in place.
In place.
Comes up any board and build it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it was done, that was done. Anyone else? No? Yeah, sorry, Auntie open back first. You, yeah, oh, Sue, I couldn't see you.
Susan Shigeru, from New Windsor. Isn't this project consistent with the master plan for the town with regards to the development, commercial development for the Stewart Airport?
Yes, yes it is. I saw another game, sir.
My name is Gary Archer. I represent the operating engineers, local thirty, stationary engineering staff. And I was wondering what GreenTrack's feeling was on using union labor, not only during the construction, but after, after the construction is done, with their employees, the stationary engineers, the skilled maintenance, as well as their hotel and casino employees.
We are, if you can leave your card, we are reaching out to local unions.
Sure.
Our communications team is reaching out to local unions to address that. We're entering into project labor agreements now, neutrality agreements, and then post-construction we want to do the same thing.
Thank you, I'll leave you my card.
Thank you.
Just so you know, my, one of my first comments when the development was first proposed was, there will be nothing without PLA.
Thank you.
You know, and when Jim first came to me, I told him, there's nothing without PLA.
Please, thank you.
Anyone else? Veronica?
Nancy Pagano.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something, maybe you've already gone over this, but how are they going to pay taxes to New Windsor?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, did you get the name?
Nancy Pagano. Okay, I live over here behind Park, pardon, Park there. Aren't these green tree going to, or whatever the company is, are they going to contribute to New Windsor taxes, or are the taxpayers going to bear some of the brunt of it?
Enormously. Enormously.
They are going to.
Yeah, well, what is it?
That's a given now, right?
Well, first of all, they're going to pay, they're going to pay a lease, just on our property, above everything else. The lease comes to one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year.
To start.
To start, that's the start, and there's escalation clauses in that. So, that alone is a huge benefit.
So in other words, as a property owner, our taxes should go down, not up?
Hopefully, yeah, I would think.
The goal, the goal of the legislation was really twofold, threefold. One was to provide dollars, real dollars for education. Now, some people leave the lottery, revenue from the lottery doesn't actually go to education. It does, it does. But what the legislature does is take, they take that and use that as a, you know, for example, if we're going to give a hundred million to education, the lottery raises four million, okay, that leaves ninety-six million to education, and we're going to use four million for something else. What this legislation says is that this will not, the revenue from casino gaming will be in addition to, and not in lieu of, revenue for education, so it'll be in addition to. The second use of the money is supposed to be for economic development, specifically for the reduction of property taxes. So the state will take eighty percent of the revenue and use that for education and for the reduction of property taxes. Green, New Windsor as a host facility will get ten percent of the total gaming revenue, half of ten percent, rather, five percent of the total gaming revenue, and Orange County will get the other five percent. And that's estimated to be six million to New Windsor and six million to Orange County per year, okay? A year. We believe it'll be higher than that ultimately, but that's what the governor's office is estimating at. In addition, as part of the host agreement, we will provide additional financial benefits to GreenTrack. And then finally, we'll be a property owner, and property owners have to pay real estate taxes. And as was said at the public meeting, it was estimated right now about thirty-seven thousand per million of assessed value, and we need to sit down with the assessor as the project is being built, to determine what the fair market value of those improvements will be. So, excuse me, to answer your question, I think we'll be paying our fair share, and I would add, as the supervisor did, an enormous share to the benefit of the town of New Windsor.
Thank you.
In addition, Bob, did you mention that within the host community agreement, there's a community development fund?
That's for you to mention.
Okay, there's a community development fund, which is considerable in and of itself, that will go for special projects in the town, and a portion of it, that's pretty much, we'll be sharing, a portion of it will be shared with the school districts, basically for scholarships for the students. And we could take, we could take every dime that we make off of this project and put it into school budgets, and it wouldn't have, it would have a negligible effect on the school budget. So what we decided was, in negotiating the host community agreement, that we would do something that would be positive for all the students coming, you know, in the school, and assure that that's where the money was spent, it wasn't spent on administration or on whims of administration in the school districts. So, when you see the whole thing, you will understand. Who was that? Veronica, you were next, and Stella, I got you here, who'll be there for that?
Veronica McNamara. I apologize if my questions are repetitive, I came in a couple minutes late. I just wondered if you could elaborate a little bit further for us, as to what you're going to be doing exactly with the stormwater runoff? And secondly, I thought when I came in, I heard you say that there was going to be some upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility in the town, and I was just wondering if those upgrades are going to go just to benefit the casino? Of course, they'll be available to assist the entire town's wastewater treatment.
Sure. The stormwater is going to be, how typically, you know, in New York State, you put in an above-ground pond, and you feed everything into the pond, and it treats for quality and quantity, and then discharges in its normal direction. For this site, we're not, we're not going to have an, we're going to have it under the parking lot, we're going to have vortex units which take care of the quality for those who are into the engineering aspect of it, and a green roof, but also to reduce the amount of runoff, plus other things that are going to be done to reduce the amounts of stormwater, and make sure the quality of stormwater that's leaving the site is of a condition that meets or exceeds the requirements of New York State. This was, we could have took, this is a redevelopment site, and again, for those who are into engineering, there are different standards for redevelopment site, we are going above and beyond those redevelopment standards for this piece of property. From the wastewater treatment plant standpoint, and the town can comment on this, the money is being done, I think the one gentleman brought up, that we were going to do improvements at the wastewater treatment plant for the entire town, a large quantity of money to do, to do the wastewater treatment plant improvements. Instead of doing something only for the casino at the site, we basically agreed to do large improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Even though we're a small quantity of waste, we do believe because of the quality of waste, we should help the entire town. Okay?
Thank you. Just as an aside, I'm a parent staring down the barrel at college education, so I certainly appreciate the help of scholarship funds that might be made available as well. Thank you.
Okay, I saw some others. Stella, I think you were next. Eric?
I'd like to know how it's going to work with the rebate on the school taxes? We have three school districts. What's Newburg's school district to get out of it?
So as the supervisor said, what we're proposing as part of the host agreement is to fund a scholarship fund for the benefit of Cornwall and the Newburg School Districts, and we would fund that for, of a million dollars a year, starting after we open up, and that would continue for at least ten years. And then the school districts and, well, what we would propose is to create a foundation that would not only hold the money, but then be determined who would qualify for the scholarships, and then the, who sits on that foundation needs to be worked out.
What about the taxes? What about our taxes, our school taxes?
The taxes, because of the way that it's a portion right now, the tax revenue will all go to the Washingtonville School District. There's no mechanism in New York State for us to pay property taxes to other school districts, so we thought the scholarship program would be the best way to address those needs.
Joe, I think you were next.
Hello, my name is Joseph Manuda of New Windsor. Have a host of questions, all bottomed on earth for the project. You mentioned dark side compliance, I was also wondering what you were doing this for the site is concerned, or what's happening? We have dark side compliance, it reflects, it's obviously created the nice kind of effect.
Right. I will get you, because I'm not an expert, it sounds like you're a better expert on lighting than I am, I will get you a copy through the supervisor's office of that section on lighting and what they're doing with all the lighting to make it not glow, so, I will, and I'll get it to you tomorrow. I will get that section of the basis of design about the lighting, and if you can get, contact the supervisor's office.
Perfect, perfect.
I'm an environmental engineer, if I talk to lighting, I'll be in big trouble.
We'd be seeking green globes or lead accreditation for this project?
We're doing lead design, yes, we would be, and again, the basis of design talked about, I think they were talking, I don't think they're doing platinum, but I believe they're going for a certain level, silver, I believe.
Green globe is a black sheep, does the same thing.
Okay, I'll mention that to the architects, we're not the architects on the project.
Okay. Sort of self-serving in some ways, but you mentioned local businesses, and how that would help local businesses being involved in the project. One of two things. One, we'd be assisting local businesses, providing them the opportunity to do franchise-type operations within the facility. You know, we had a very nice project, Bethel Woods, that I've been to, they had local merchants come in, and after a few years, the large conglomerate sort of knocked them out of the box. I was wondering if we might see something similar for that here, just to be concerned.
Let me answer that. The goal would be to reach out to the community and see what franchises are available that fit within the restaurant, the bars, the retail footprints within the facility. And so we welcome that opportunity for the community to come and propose those partnerships. In addition, what we would try and do with our players' club, and this has been done elsewhere in the country, but it's a concept of cross-promotion. So we, excuse me, so if you had a restaurant in New Windsor, or a restaurant in Newburg, or a restaurant in Middletown, restaurant in Port Jurys, we would purchase gift certificates, you know, the gift cards, from those partners, co-sponsored partners that we have. And as part of our players' club point system, if you get to a certain point level, you'd get a gift card to push the patrons back out to the community, to be able to use at restaurants, bars, shops, et cetera. So, you know, it's a way of doing it onsite, but there's also a big way to get the economic dollars back to the community through our point system.
Understood, understood. And we'd be using local professionals for the project as well?
Yes.
I stood in on the one in Tuxedo, with Genting, and they were proposing consistently a world-class type aesthetic and casino, is that what you're proposing here as well?
Yes.
Yes. And you mentioned ugly parking garage as a necessity, but in my opinion, it's not a necessity, it's a choice.
Well, yes and no, okay? Because gamblers, you know, I kid around the ugly parking garage, but it is what it is. Casinos, gamblers that want to come to casinos want two things. They want to have a great entertaining experience, okay? And we're going to provide that to them. But they also want to be able to get in and get out, okay? And part of that problem is, if you park too far away in the hinterland, not only does it affect, start to affect the green space, which we're trying to address, okay? But also, the further they have to walk, the less likely they are to come back.
Let me adjust my comment, I'm for the parking garage, just not the opening.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to design around that. We have very good architects.
She is in the eye of the beholder.
That's right. They want to have a great entertaining experience, okay, and we're, we're going to provide that to them. But they also want to be able to get in and get out, okay? And part of that problem is if you park too far away in the hinterland, not only does it affect, start to affect the green space, which we're trying to address, okay? But also, the further they have to walk, the less likely they are to come back.
Let me adjust my comment, I'm for the parking garage, just not the opening itself.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to design around that. We have very good architects.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
That's right.
Uh, I, you mentioned that the building was sort of going to be somewhat burned, looking to the side, mountain, hill, sort of, for that type of aesthetic. I'm wondering why, um, if you're providing a, a brand-new feature to this community, why not let it be a shiny beacon and design it as such? Just my own opinion on that.
Okay. No, when we said that, we, that's to protect the residential on the other side, if you get, if you get, you know, you know line of sight issues, if, the closer you get to that this way, I mean, you have residential on the other side of that hill. It's, it'll be a sighting beacon for when you come in, I mean, that's that main International Boulevard, you're coming in International Boulevard, this will be the prominent feature as you come in there. It will be, and we can talk a little about, about the architectural firm, but they are a wonderful firm.
If W H G designs world-class facilities, this will be a world-class breathtaking facility once it's built. The height of the hotel too lower than the tavern, is that considered?
But what was the height on that, that one?
Fourteen stories. Fourteen, it's fourteen stories, but the way, one of the other reasons to build it into the hotel, uh, because we're trying to use the slope, natural slope of the land. The gaming floor will actually be a little bit elevated, so you'll actually come in higher, all right, as you, as you come in. So as you're looking at it, the hotel will actually look a little bit lower than fourteen stories, because some of the rooms will be, some of the facilities will be buried in behind the gaming floor.
Understood. And as far as entertainment, um, you know, the community with the, with things that have been going on, especially in the school district, a lot of the activity programs have been, things of that nature. Uh, the children really do need a place to, to go. And I was wondering if part of your entertainment, maybe in the home site, or perhaps within the town, that's something of that nature might be addressed as well?
You can, you can, doesn't matter, neither one of us can address that. So, um, in this triangle piece right here, right now is, is a gymnasium, but as I understand it, is used during the fall and winter for basketball and other indoor activities. Um, what we are proposing is to fund the building of a new, uh, indoor basketball court, plus soccer fields, plus an aquatic center. Which would be located at the town park, which is called Mount Mary.
Christie, yeah.
Christie Bank Park. And we're calling it the Mid Hudson Valley Sports and Aquatic Center. Um, and that would be available to all residents of the Mid Hudson Valley. Um, but it would be two basketball courts, three indoor soccer fields, with a unique roof system that actually the, the sides can open up in the, in the spring and the summer, so that it's not an indoor facility at that point, it's outdoors but covered. Uh, plus an, an aquatic center. Uh, and then a second floor that can overlook both the aquatic center and the basketball courts. So state-of-the-art facility that would be built and funded by Greentrek.
When, I, I assume this is not the final design, this is just a concept?
Um, I would think that that's probably a right answer. Um, so, uh, this will be the, the design that's submitted on June thirtieth. Um, as things continue through the summer to be designed, um, it'll be tweaked a little bit, but this will be essentially the design.
Okay, cause my question goes to incorporating the local aesthetic, the local history of the area within the aesthetic design.
Great, great question, so, I'm, I'm glad you raised that. So we've already reached out to the town historian, who has some great pictures and artifacts that he's dying to put on display. Cause he's, uh, he's, he's, he's tired of having them in, in the basement, attic, and, and places where no one gets to see. So part of the interior design, and W H G, uh, will probably be the interior designer as well, is to try and work on what he has as way of artifact, artifacts, and to utilize what, what the area was. An airport, uh, army airbase, and try and build that into the internal design. So he even said that, he, he knows where there's a, an original airplane, that's had some VFW in upstate New York, that we could probably get and put that in there somewhere. So that, that's, that is good discussion.
I should have one last question before you point to one. The, the, um, three hundred, the overpass to eighty-seven, the thruway, will that be widened? Would that need to be widened?
You're gonna extend the, yeah, extend the pass lanes. All right. It's, it's four improvements I wrote.
Okay.
You're gonna extend the pass lanes on two sides of the thruway.
Thank you very much.
Guys, I should have warned you about Glenn before you went to the story. Yes, Tyree?
Hi, everyone, my name is Tyree Pail, we live in a reserve in New Windsor. I'm also a member of the Cornwall School Board. Um, I'm definitely happy to hear about the million-dollar potential scholarship plan. Um, but I will say, it would be great if you do include the school boards. Um, I know that there's a concern about administrative costs and so on and so forth, but it would be great to include the school boards in deciding where whatever funds Greentrek decides to provide, what it's used for. In part, because as many of the folks in here know who have children and who might not have children, due to the common core and the standards that have now been set by the state, there are a number of unfunded mandates that school districts have to deal with and find ways to fund. Um, so a project like this would be fantastic, where if there's money that's set aside for schools, maybe some of that money could go towards new technology, smart boards, iPads in every class, coming in twenty sixteen, there's gonna be a mandate that every test that's taken is going to have to be done online. So with that being said, schools have to find ways to bring in new computers, so on and so forth. So if this project were to take place, as much as I'm a fan and I have a thirteen-year-old who is soon going to college, I have a college-age daughter right now, these things are gonna affect our children currently within the district. So it's something that I hope that you guys consider as opposed to saying, okay, we're gonna slot this monies for the million dollars for scholarships. And especially because I know in, in Cornwall, we're fortunate enough to have a ninety-seven percent graduation rate and eighty-five percent of our kids all get scholarships to school, be it either for rides or, you know, somewhere down the, the line.
So what we, great, great point. So what we did to make sure that we're utilizing the needs of the school district, right now as it's described in the host agreement, is that we're creating a, a foundation that would get, to determine the use of those proceeds. And our goal would be that to have school board members from both of those school districts on that foundation board. It would be a not-for-profit, and they would then decide. Um, if there's other items that we can help with, you know, we'd like to hear that and work with you, uh, continually to try and, try and address that. If we have to open up, open up the host agreement at some point, we can certainly try and do that. You know, okay? But we're certainly, you know, we thought, and the supervisor thought, being very sensitive to the cost of college, I had three in college last year. Um, so that's why I don't drive expensive cars, I, but, um, you know, I, I need, you know, we thought that we would address the immediate need, which is potentially scholarships, but we can expand that.
I, I think we should consider that, because everybody is going to be coming for, and that's a, that's an immediate need.
Right.
For all those that are coming.
With, with respect to the electronic needs and the requirements, I mean, that is being addressed in Albany. Um, the, uh, the dormitory authority has been given the authority to issue bonds on behalf of school districts to address that technology need. So certainly you can reach out to the dormitory authority and see what their program is about.
And that's something that we're definitely doing, but as we all know, we've all been, don't need to say anymore. So with that being the case, um, so I'm glad that you're open for, you know, working with instructors to be able to do that. Uh, secondly, according to some calculations, they're looking at a hundred and twenty million dollars in revenue. If we're looking at ten percent, twelve million, we've got six million going Orange County, six million coming to New Windsor. There are a number of stories out there, I gotta say, and, you know, casinos are kind of under decline, which, you know, throughout the East Coast, definitely Atlantic City, stuff failing in Philly. How, how did you guys come to your number of about a hundred and twenty million in revenue, or what metrics are you guys using to, you know, kind of come up with that number, considering the state affairs with casinos?
Um, I don't, I don't agree that casinos are declining, I think it depends on the type of casino and how many casinos are in the area. What our consultant did was look at the population, the amount of traffic that those two interstates have on it every day during the week and then on the weekends, and determined as a, based on their, uh, models, how many people would attend, go to the casino, stay and provide revenue to, to not only Greentrek, but more importantly, to the state.
Tyree, uh, slowly say, say this, the comment about, and I've done a lot of reading, uh, recently about, about casinos and, and declining. Uh, it isn't not necessarily casinos, the gambling, uh, industry itself that is declining. What is declining is, is the venue. Uh, you know, Atlantic City, uh, you know, where there's a concentration of casinos. Uh, you know, everybody knows that Vegas is in trouble. Uh, Atlantic City is, you know, so, some of the casinos are, are failing, uh, one of the major corporations is, I just read four hundred and thirty million dollars into the red, something, something like that. So, uh, you know, it's not necessarily the industry itself that's declining, it is, it is the, the venue where there's a large concentration.
I, you know, I don't know if you guys have thought about this, and I tell you, I'm hopeful that this project goes through, I'm hopeful that it works, I know you are as well. Um, but in high, you know, if this, God forbid, were to fail, has the board thought about what would they do with this facility? If it's just sitting vacant because it failed? And you might not have thought about it, which is fine, but, you know, I, I like to think about, but God forbid, worst-case scenario. So that just might be something to think about, and if you thought about it, great, if you haven't, then, you know, something to think about.
The, the only way, the only way we would get back is that they want to hit the fall, and I think that's highly unlikely. Uh, you know, then the town would end up owning it. I don't know, uh, maybe I could be a pit boss? You know, anything, anything, yeah. You know, any, any, you know, anything that's out of store that does fail, uh, reverts back to the town. You know, any of those buildings, you know, the medical center, the law offices, all that, the buildings, you know, would revert back to the town should they go into default. No, again, yes, sir?
Kevin Moore, seventeen oh five Marklorn Way. You spoke briefly about emergency services, can we expand on that, specifically the police department? I know it's kind of tight quarters here now, there was talk of moving over to the airport. Uh, but if any casino is something that large, bringing some resources, I'm not sure if people are interested.
So, as part of the host agreement, what we're proposing is to knock down the existing police academy. Take a, an existing building that the town now owns, which is the former, uh, what's it called? Army Reserve Building, that's on Stewart F one site. We'll provide funding to the town for the town to refurbish that building, to create a brand-new, state-of-the-art police academy and police department, so that the police department gets out of the basement, moves over there as well. And in addition, we'll provide financial assistance to the police department for training and other purposes, uh, as part of the host agreement. As well as the fire department and the M T.
Yeah, remember this, when we move the police, and the intention has always been to move the police department out to the facility at Stewart, to the old Army Reserve. You know, we're, we're busting at the seams right here, in the town hall right now. And when that happens, we gain all that space down at the other end of the building. So, you know, it's gonna be a real benefit to the town.
Well, I'm assuming you're gonna add, have to add more police, so it just went from here to there?
Uh, we'll have to add some, but, uh, but I got an interesting, uh, little, little article that, uh, our chief did, I had him do a little project. And I'll get into that at, at the end of the meeting. So. Jim?
Jim, chief of town in Windsor. It should be noted too that when you hear numbers like three point one million dollars for the renovation of the Army Reserve Building, that number isn't just a number that we all thought sounded cute when we plugged into a host community agreement. We had a, uh, we actually had that building, George had gotten bids on it, uh, two thousand eight, April, two thousand eight, they came in at two point six to two point eight million for everything that they wanted to do at the time, which included the jails, the stars, everything that was to be done. Uh, we just added a two percent a year for the six years or seven years of the past, and we came up with three point one million. So everything is calculated, figured out, and that's exactly what the cost to renovate it, where the town utilized it for the police department needs. So, and that goes true with everything that George is going on host community agreement. They're not just numbers that are just, they sound cute. These are real numbers, and it's all gonna work.
And, and remember, you know, within that host community agreement, there's additional funds for community benefit, and, you know, which is substantial. For us to do other work, you know, uh, pretty shortly, we're gonna have to, uh, chief, we're gonna have to change our radio system within what, another five years or so?
Three to five years, yeah.
You know, which is gonna be a very expensive project, so, you know, there's, there's other funds there that are surely gonna benefit the town. Okay, sir?
My name is Delash, over in New Windsor. You addressed the traffic, you figure everyone's coming off, um, International Boulevard, what about the back way with two oh seven?
Well, that's.
I know you, you said you've done, um, surveys, but.
We didn't, we didn't say everything was coming off. Matter of fact, your, your consultant pushed back, and we're putting fifteen percent of the traffic on to, on to two oh seven, three hundred. Even though, we don't believe it's gonna be that much, but we did put fifteen percent. So we didn't consider everything was coming in international, we put fifteen percent of the traffic from this casino going out to two oh seven, three hundred. Again, your own consultants were pushing that, so we looked at that, hence the improvements that we're making on that road. And by the way, we even argued that, again, that's why you had, had independent people, we argued that our peaks were different. Casino, casino peaks are different than normal, than normal peaks that occur in traffic. But again, to be the worst-case scenario, they, they matched up the peaks, so we, we looked at it, so, worst case. Even though we know our peaks are Saturday, but they're not at the normal peaks that happen when you have Saturday peak traffic. And of course, your weekday, uh, evening peaks, our peaks are different, but again, conservatively, we put them on top of there and looked at those numbers. So again, took the conservative approach, didn't say everything was coming in here, although we believe a good portion of, more of it will, we put fifteen percent of the traffic out.
But you're all in the area and the roads, not, not a lot of rooms are widening.
Right, and, and the improvements that they made, right, are the improvements that they can make at those intersections and adding turn lanes, et cetera. There are some pinch points, as you know, along there, that, that exist. Uh, we can only do those improvements that'll have, that, that were needed anyway, they were proposed years ago, we're doing those improvements.
But if this is completed, and you got it, everything is done.
Yep.
Is it gonna be washed under the carpet, that's not gonna be there, but then, because everything is completed?
We, we have, we have to build those improvements that we talked about, it's not an if come. And then, to be ultra-conservative, the town has asked for a, a follow-up traffic study, so we can, you know, whether it's a year after it's opened, to look at the numbers. And if our numbers are wrong, which we, we don't believe, because we've been so conservative, that there could be other improvements that would be necessary. You know, signal timing, things like that, and that would happen in.
But there's definitely be pushback, just like in Woodbury, they keep it very busy down there.
Now, let's, let's.
That road intersection now is being pushed back even further.
Let, let me say this, there will be no pushback on the improvements on two oh seven. They're gonna, they're gonna be done simultaneously with the construction of the casino. It's, it's that simple. Uh, you know, no improvements, no casino. I mean, it's pretty, pretty simple. Uh, you know, we, we sat down, our, our traffic consultant identified, uh, areas that need improvement. Uh, Bob and I sat down the other day, uh, I gave him some maps that I wanted, where I wanted to see improvement. Matter of fact, I think I went a little, little further than Phil actually identified, but, uh, those, those will be done. You know, there's, I mean, there is no question about it. If they, if they get the license, those improvements will be done.
And, and just remember, one, one thing to, to point out, I mean, I live off of two oh seven like you.
You know what it's like, right?
And, and the, the road, they are talking about not just adding turn lanes and widening spaces that will, that are the choke points, that are problems now. But it's ultimately, one of the things that, that helps us know that they're gonna do this, besides George telling you that, no, no improvements, no casino. But they, they need this. If, if they have a casino that's nothing but a traffic boondoggle, no one will come. They'll go to the Catskills, they'll go to Foxwoods, they'll go somewhere where it's easy to get to. So it's in their best interest to make sure two oh seven and three hundred are as easy to traverse as possible. I sat in on the meetings with these guys on the traffic stuff. And we went through, you know, basically took meter by meter and went through each intersection and where they needed to, to expand the queue-up lanes, uh, some of which is already underway, uh, but other areas that they said, okay, this traffic is gonna be worst-case scenario. What do we gotta do, how far do we have to push it back, so that those turn lanes are improved, so that you don't end up with cars lining up and slowing down two oh seven. So, that, that was a major consideration that these guys have looked into. Um, and that, and that's gonna be taken care of at and before the casino goes up.
Those are the only two ways you have?
Absolutely, well, I mean, you have the main way in, obviously, where, where you built four-laning highways, four, you know, a thirty-five million dollar project that the state put in a road to get everybody into the airport. So, obviously, you want to divert as much traffic onto eighty- So, obviously, you want to divert as much traffic onto eighty-four, onto seven forty-seven, and then down International Drive. But to the extent that cars do come on two oh seven and three hundred, these improvements that they're talking about will ultimately help all of us. So, that, that's, I mean, casino or no casino, you have problems with the turn lane when people are queuing up to turn from two oh seven left onto three hundred when you're going to work in the morning at eight o'clock in the morning. And they're, they're going to make that improvement for us, assuming they're here. No casino, that's still going to be done. That's already something that the town is working on.
That's already planned, planned.
But now, we're going to back that up and take two oh seven all the way up to where Stewart Airport enters at Brunick Road. And each one of those choke points that you have because of more traffic that you're anticipating, they're looking at, at changing those queue lanes and adding turn lanes into the airport that backs all the way down, so that you don't have an issue there. And then, a- as Drew has mentioned, the, the point that we insisted on as a board and as a supervisor talked about is if that's not going to work in six months and a year, we insisted upon a further study. So if, if you and I continue to try and get out in the morning two years from now, and there's nothing but casino traffic, and I can't turn to go to work, we're going to know that from the study, and we're going to make further improvements to that road as necessary, and they're going to pay for it. And that's what you want, and that's what's in the host community agreement, and that, that's what's being anticipated by the board ahead of time.
And, and so to answer your question, there's other things that we can do as a casino to address the traffic needs. First off, the work shifts can be staggering. So now everyone's coming in at eight or nine o'clock in the morning, okay? Second thing is, gamblers don't like the mornings, okay? There will be, I can guarantee you, the best time for anyone to gamble will be in the morning because the casino hall will be completely a ghost town. Okay? So until patients start coming in late morning, when work traffic has already passed, you know, again, as Drew mentioned, our peak times are different than the traditional traffic study peak times.
Well, I know.
But we overlaid it anyway, just to make sure that we went to worst-case scenario.
For weekends too.
But the weekends, again, the peak time of the weekends, our peak will be different than your peak, okay?
The one thing that makes me feel very confident and comfortable about the way New Windsor has approached this is, yes, Green Track has their own experts, and let me tell you that they have hired some excellent people to do their work for them. The town of New Windsor has also hired our own experts in traffic, in attorneys and planners and all this stuff. And by the way, the cost of those experts that we've hired have been borne by Green Track. So we are not in any way trying to buy a pig in a poach. We know that what we're doing is concrete, we know it's good, and we know it's in the best interests of the residents. And I feel very comfortable about that.
Anyone else? I did see another hand, Barney.
Frank Daddi, Hard Drive, New Windsor. I, I thought your presentation relative to the, essentially the sports complex of New York site, the aquatic center. You said Green Track is going to fund that. Are they going to fund the construction of it? Or are they going to also contribute to the operation and maintenance in the future of that, of that same project?
Oh, just, just the construction.
Let, let me, let me address your, your question, Barney. The sports complex in Aquatic Center that we are designing and proposing will be second to none probably in the state. It will generate, we anticipate that it will generate enough revenue to carry our recreation program. You know, I'm, I'm, there's going to be soccer moms in the, the audience, and, you know, soccer dads in the audience, and they know how many people are attracted to these tournament, these weekend tournaments. As a matter of fact, Andrew can attest to that, because every time I call him on Saturday morning, he's out, out to some soccer match or he's out to some swim, swim meet somewhere. The revenue is just, the anticipated revenue is incredible. And it will more than carry the facility and our, some of our recreation programs. There was somebody before you. I saw another hand before Barney. Uh, yes. I couldn't see who's Ira.
Ira Compton, four forty-three Jackson Avenue, New Windsor. Just a couple of questions for you. You talked about the, the police presence a little bit, but isn't the state police going to be on? Don't you have your own security? Don't you have your own cameras and things like that that you're going to?
Right, so the state police will be on-site. In addition, we'll have a trained security force, and every aspect of the gaming floor will be, every aspect, every inch of the gaming floor will be under constant surveillance, as well as other areas of the facility, the parking garage, the hotel, the restaurants, the bars. Safety is the most important part of operating an entertainment facility. Not only safety for the people that are there, but to make sure that other people don't impact negatively the fun that people can have coming in. So absolutely, so not only will we have our own surveillance, the state police will be there, and that surveillance will be everywhere.
So the town of New Windsor is not going to bore the cost of, solely the cost of the, of the additional.
Correct. Correct.
And the, the number of construction jobs to, to build this, has there been an estimate on that and a number?
We estimate about eighteen hundred, approximately, all union jobs under P L A neutrality agreements. And we're looking for local, you know, employees first, and then we'll go out to the other parts of the county, and then go to surrounding counties. We're going to avoid as much as we can attracting labor from other parts of the state. This is a regional facility. We want it to be built by regional laborers and then staffed by regional residents.
And, and how, how, what's the duration of the project?
We need to be open in twenty-four months. So our estimate and our goal is to be sooner than that. You know, so for example, if we were to be awarded a license December first, we would want to be open sometime around Labor Day of twenty sixteen.
And the last question, the, the number of employees that you, permanent employees, that you'll, I guess, be drawn from the city of Newburgh, Middletown, and the surrounding area, how, how many employees will you have?
We'll have priority, well, full-time employees afterward. Again, approximately twenty-five hundred. And what our commitment is to draw first from the immediate regions, so the town of New Windsor, the city of Newburgh. We'll have bus transportation available for our workers if they, if they don't have cars. We'll have onsite daycare facilities for those workers and the, for the children of those workers. We'll have other training available. We'll partner with local colleges to have training for their students as well. The Culinary Institute, our goal is to try and get them here as well. So again, it'll be a regional facility staffed by regional employees and residents.
Great, thanks. Thanks for the town board too, for your work and bringing Green Track to this anyway.
Thank you, Ira.
Thank you.
There was another hand. Yes, sir?
Yeah, how you doing? It's Grant, oh, Paul Schatz from Windsor Highway. There's a couple of questions that I just thought before, but, you know, I ain't got too much experience. I'm, I'm just an old Air Force guy and a telephone guy in the city. But one thing was mentioned, improvements to the park. The park is actually, I think, in a west location. My family farmed that property for years, and we had problems going in and out with hay wagons. Now you got more cars going in because the park's getting bigger. Is that going to be addressed? Because that mountain road sucks. And on top of that, what kind of impact is going to be with the airport? Are we going to have more air traffic with people flying into the casino? Because that'd be great, because it would help that. But also, at the same time, how would that impact the military side of it? Like I said, I'm part of the military. I take the stupid stuff like this. And also, I heard there's a thirty-inch main gravity fed that's going to be blown from the sewer tube. I mean, you can't even just talk about that. I said, that's awesome. But I can't see that being done, being that I was engineering out of the, with the airport. That far of a distance without some type of compound. I mean, good, that'd be cool. And, and the last question I got for you is, we addressed a while back, New Windsor trying to have their own school district. Being that they're funding most of the money in Washington, could we at least try to make a vote again to have New Windsor have their own school district? That we get, instead of the money from Washington, we go back to the kids of the town of New Windsor? Thanks, appreciate it.
Let, let me answer the school question first, and then we'll get into the rest of it. I will never support our own school district simply because it's too expensive. We could not afford it.
Okay.
Most, most of us would, would have to move out of town simply because of the school taxes. Newburgh School is what, now two hundred and eighty million? Is that what the figure was?
Yeah.
Sue, do you remember?
The school?
School tax?
School tax.
It was two, two hundred and eighty million, something like that? We simply couldn't afford it. All the school facilities within New Windsor are owned by the city of Newburgh, or, you know, the Newburgh School District. We, we could not afford it, no matter what Green Track, you know.
Was there?
Yeah, no, no, no matter what it was, we simply couldn't afford it. You know, and anybody that knows me knows, knows that, you know, my primary interest is about the future generations coming up. You know, I'm about the kids.
Thirty-inch main.
I'm sorry, what just?
Thirty-inch main. Thirty-inch main.
Oh, thirty-inch main, thirty-inch main's been there for, since two thousand five, I think.
And it was installed just for, they take, they call it the diversion sewer, picks up all this and the development of this area. And your town engineer, in fact, with capacity in that thirty-inch sewer.
That's awesome.
Yep, that's it?
That's awesome. I just saw that, that distance, I saw a compound for that, we played somewhere.
It's all right, yeah. So, to address two of the other points with veterans, one of the items I didn't mention is the fact that we are going to develop a, a employment program for returning veterans. We're working with the, the base that's there to try and accomplish that. In addition, we'll have a special program for a handicap and deal with the National Institute for the Blind for employment of, of handicap or blind individuals as well. And then finally, with airport traffic, part of the goal of the Mid Hudson Regional Plan from over ten years ago was to have this type of economic development take place at Stewart Avenue, specifically Stewart Airport. I grew up near Stewart Avenue. I always said, Stewart Airport. So specifically to address, to attract new carriers into the airport. To make it a viable airport, not only for, as a fourth airport of the Port Authority, but also as a real viable airport, airport for the residents of the area. So I believe that we take that into account as part of our study, and the roadways will be sufficient for that.
Now, you, you have to remember, when, when you talk about military versus civil aircraft, the, the whole purpose of the airport was to increase, and the whole thrust of Port Authority is to increase air traffic at Stewart.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, that's always been wrong. And that, that's what Port Authority took over.
What about also to the traffic on Mountain Area going to the park?
Well, we, we have, Matt's not here. What, what do you give us the figures, twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand.
Yeah. We, we, you know, Community Day, we have twenty thousand people. And we manage quite well, you know, we fill up the parking lots, we use the fields. The new facility will have its own parking. For Andrew, how many cars? Two hundred and forty? Was that what it was?
Yeah.
I think, think that's the number I remember.
That's correct.
Yeah, two hundred, two hundred and forty that'll have parking for it. So, you know, that's well taken care of. I would like to see the entrance in north ninety-four to that.
Correct.
Facility, so. Jim?
Jim Petro again. To answer more directly to one of Barney's questions about the running of the sports complex and the, and the money there, and always questions too, like about the road, the improvements to the road if you need it later on. I think, you know, we have to keep reminding everybody that there's a community benefit fund that George mentioned earlier, and I know he's been working on it all day, that's quite large. I don't want the number, you can throw it out there, but it, for any of these contingencies, money would be there every year on top of everything else that we've talked about, ratables, all that, that this fund could certainly take up any slack that any of us may have oversight or didn't think of, which I doubt that's the case. But that's the fund, as you can stand on that a little bit, it's very.
Bobby, you have an objection that I mentioned?
Nope.
The, the community benefit fund is two and a half million dollars annually, which is considerable. I envision a lot of that going to capital improvements, you know, as, as the world, you know, things, things like that. You know, I, I have a million projects in the back of my mind, you know, that, that I'm always thinking about. And, and then I look at that two and a half million dollars and I say, hey, you know, a lot of these things could come to fruition if, if we had some extra money. So. Ira.
Isn't the, isn't the town annual operating budget around, what, seven million dollars, eight million dollars, something like that? I don't know.
Uh, that, that would be, that would be close to the levy, but no, the operate, the total operating budget is, I think, I don't have Jack here. I think this year was twenty-seven and a half million dollars.
And.
But that's capital and everything, that's.
We're going to be getting from, from the, the lease of the property and the, and the five percent is going to be close to six million is that what, what we're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a big dent.
Yeah.
You're the double operating.
Remember this though, you know, with, with that money, you know, there's, there's a lot of capital expense that we are looking forward to incurring. And one, one of the big capital expenses is water. Another capital expense is going to be the sewer improvements within the town. So, you know, to say that every dime of that is going to go to tax reduction would be erroneous. But a large percentage of it, yes. I hope I answered that question.
George, one of the things that I've heard said a lot around Orange County is that in Orange County, there are five proposed casinos. One at Tuxedo Airport, in the town of Windsor is one of the selected sites.
Okay, anything else from the audience?
Just a comment. I just want to truly, as a president, architect, thank the board, supervise the board, and Mr. Petro, all of you for having the foresight to see this site as to what it could be, and we're getting it to the future where it isn't now, so that we can have something to offer this opportunity to, for the town. And I just think it's a tremendous thing, and of course, it was ten years beyond. And now we're here today being able to, well, pretty much a show over.
I would, I would be remiss if I didn't give credit where credit is due. We wouldn't have Stewart Airport if it wasn't for, basically, both four people, three people. If it wasn't for the vision of former supervisor George Myers, and for the efforts of Jim Petro, and our former town attorney, Phil Farini, who engineered the, the entire acquisition of Stewart Airport, we wouldn't be in this position today. And, you know, they most certainly deserve recognition for it. And of course, Sue Kelly, who carried, you know, through Congress and got it approved for, for the town of New Windsor. You know, it was, obviously, it's a tremendous benefit to the town of New Windsor. And those people should, you know, most certainly, you know, get, get credit for acquiring that property. So, that being said. Are we done? So there are a couple of things I do want to address. I'm going to close the comments now, and there's a couple, I just want to go, go through a couple of things. You know, there, there's some, some comments about crime associated with casinos. So I asked our chief to make some calls to similar casinos. You know, what I, what I call, you know, one-site casinos. And he did, he called Mountain Area Casino Resort down in Mount, uh, Mount Polkino, Pennsylvania. The Valley Forge Casino Resort in King of Prussia, Pennsylvania. The Hollywood Casino Resort in Grant, uh, Grantville, Pennsylvania. Casino at Delaware Park, in Delaware Park, Pennsylvania. The Ameristar Casino Resort, I've never heard of some of these, St. Charles, Missouri. And what he came, and here's his quote in his memo. "Each agency made very similar statements. All reported no substantial increase in crime or criminal activity with regards to the presence of a casino within their municipality. Most noticed a slight increase in medical response with calls for service primarily due to elderly patients visiting the establishment." And, and, you know, I, I kind of resent the remark because I kind of resemble that remark. But, you know, I, I hope, you know, Mike did a good job of calling around, and, you know, I, I, people realize. now, I, I, people realize that, now, this is not Atlantic City, and this is not Vegas. Now, this is a single-location site that is isolated. Uh, you know, people thought, people thought, well, it's got a big prostitution. Well, if you'll think back, uh, a few, a few months ago, that New Windsor cracked one of the largest sex trade, uh, sex slavery in, uh, in the state, and probably, probably the largest, made the biggest arrest ever, uh, on that. There was no casino that generated that. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, and they talked about narcotics, you know, it's gonna draw, draw narcotics. A couple of weeks ago, uh, in a, in a residential development, there made an arrest that amounted to two keys of cocaine. You know, there was no casino there. Uh, last week, the district attorney and local police agencies arrested sixty-four people on felony crime, uh, felony drug arrests. Didn't involve a casino. So, you know, it's kind of a, you know, to me, it, it's a bogus comment. It's, it's a comment from people that just plain wanna be negative. Uh, you know, just for the sake of being negative, and it doesn't overwater. So I, I hope that, that resolves something, some, some questions. Um, and I, I do, do wanna kind of add my, my thoughts, and, uh, I'm actually gonna re-estate them. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, where a casino should be located. Some think that, uh, if the region should be awarded two licenses, both should go to Sullivan County. I disagree. That both should go to Sullivan County. They would argue that Orange County is just as in need of, for economic boost that, uh, a casino would bring. One of the biggest arguments for locating a casino and giving it a locality is unemployment that it would generate, and I believe that that's a pretty good reason. So if you look at New York State Department of Labor's latest figures, Sullivan County had twenty-two-hundred, uh, of its workforce unemployed. Orange County had eighty-nine-hundred of its workforce unemployed. Now, using, uh, those figures, Sullivan County's unemployment, uh, labor pool couldn't even supply enough employees to fulfill the needs of one casino, let alone two. By the same source, the cities of Newburgh and Middletown have a combined unemployment force of fifteen-hundred, or sixty-eight percent of the entire Sullivan County figure. All you would agree that Sullivan County most certainly needs economic boost. That casino would bring, uh, an equal economic boost, uh, to Orange County, and it is well needed. Why then Stewart Airport? You've had heard it for years, and, uh, it's, it really, really bugs me. From every politician on every level, Touting Stewart Airport is the great economic engine of the Hudson Valley. But, but what we have seen in economic benefit from it? Not much of anything. From New Windsor government's standpoint, it is more a burden than a benefit. The entire pilot, pilot payment received from Port Authority for all their buildings at Stewart Airport is twenty-four thousand fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents annually. Can you believe that? Now, for that, we provide police, ambulance, fire, sewer, and water. And let's not forget that New Windsor lost almost eight thousand acres of taxable land to the state of New York as part of the Stewart Forest. Off our tax rolls. I mean, we, we get, we get compensation from the state for, uh, open space, but nowhere near the potential that those, those acreages would have provided to, to New Windsor. But there's other things that make Stewart an obvious choice for Orange County. It's accessible from Interstate eighty-four and Interstate eighty-seven directly, without impacting local roads. The state of New York has invested approximately twenty-five million dollars in direct access to that airport. And studies show that about eighty-five percent of the traffic will assess, access casino from these highways. Both water and sewer infrastructure are in place at Stewart. They don't have to be built, they're there, they exist. Stewart's location away from Route Seventeen Corridor, corridor will not act as a cutoff destination for any casino located in Sullivan County. By its very location, Stewart will change the catchment area that will attract patrons from the areas north and east more readily than Sullivan County location. Stewart has readily available public transportation by bus and rail. We have the Salisbury Station, and we have the, uh, short-line bus terminal on, um, Seventeen K. And of course, casino would be remiss if it didn't provide bus service from those locations. And in talking to the casino's operators, uh, they most certainly intend to do that. Putting aside host community benefits, tax revenues, and, in our case, rent received from, uh, the casino, the most important benefit it creates is jobs, especially when considered seven percent unemployment rate in the city of Newburgh. I think it was put, put best in an article that appeared in a local newspaper last week regarding sixty-four felony drug arrests. A local police chief commented on those arrests, saying, "All young pair, people, no parents in the house, and no jobs." I think that says it all. And to me, our youth is, you know, that, that's why I'm here. Uh, that, that's always my focus. And I believe that, you know, this will bring the jobs that, especially the city of New burgh needs. So, with that being said, I thank everybody for being here. I hope you've got your questions. Thank you all.